Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call the June 18 action meeting to order and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll start with our audience of citizens. Does anyone want to make comment tonight? Okay, I'll read the disclaimer. Here we are. This meeting is being videotaped for community cable channels and streamed live. Individuals attending this meeting and intending to speak to the board should be aware that they are being videotaped. In order to meet the requirements of Pennsylvania's Sunshine Law, it's necessary to record the names of all citizens who speak to the board during the meeting. To assure compliance with this requirement, it is essential that those planning to address the board state their name and municipality. Members of the audience are asked to limit their questions and comments to three minutes. As a reminder, the audience of citizens portion of the meeting is designed for residents and taxpayers in the district to provide comment and feedback on matters which are or may come before the board. It is not designed for debate or discussion with the board. When appropriate, individual school directors may choose to respond to public comments that have been made once the audience of citizens period has concluded or request that a matter of the administration -- pardon me. Request that a member of the administration follow up with the speakers after the meeting, and this is in reference to Board Policy 903. Would anyone like to make public comment? Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
Could you please state your name and your address?
Yeah, and if I -- can you hear me? Okay. The mask is just because I have a respiratory thing and I don't want to give it to anybody else. My name is Stephen Reinhardt. I'm from Lansdaleboro. I've never spoken before without a, you know, anything in front of me to guide me. Yesterday's commencement ceremony and last year's. The presentation, you know, and I want to, you know, state first that I absolutely respect both our military and the J-Razi program here. The, even though I was assured by Dr. Bauer that the rifles that were carried were fake or, you know, replicas, I just want to say, I was at Penn State as a sophomore September 17th, 1996. Bullets landed to the left of me, to the right of me, and over my head at my dorm. And I just want to say it's triggering, and I'm not sure in today's society and culture that it's appropriate maybe to have such a display of arms on the field at that time. It's, you know, that's that part. And I actually didn't know that I was going to speak about this until about 45 minutes ago. But also, I know from Dr. Bauer that about 6,900 people went through security, nothing, you know, successfully. I'm very happy about that. I do want to say one thing. I was very surprised to learn the orchestra members did not go through security, were on the field, you know, could have brought anything in with them. It is a big failure and lapse in security that needs to be addressed, and I just want, you know, wanted to state that because if 6,900 people have to do it, you know, that should be everybody, especially if you're going to be on the field. And that's pretty much what I have to say. I mean, I'll be contacting you via email. Excuse me. But I, you know, I just wanted to have both of those issues just out there, you know, you know, for consideration. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to make public comment this evening? Good evening.
Jason Lanier Lansdale. I've been talking with you folks for a while about the usefulness of some of the things that's been implemented in the school district, meaning SEL, DEI, Equity, all this, these things, and asking always, who benefits from doing this? And I've been posting information about, or I've been talking to you guys about information, looking at the PSSA test and how it shows that all proficiencies have declined. And I had actually a discussion after last meeting with Mr. Fusco. He said, "Don't look at PSSA, look at Keystone's." So I did. I looked at what the Keystone results show. Now going, so if we look back historically where we were prior, 2016, 90% of the kids were proficient or better in algebra, 90% were same in biology, and 92% in literature of all kids, okay? Now, 2024, proficiency or better, 49.8%. Let's call it 50% of the kids are proficient or better. So we've gone from 90% proficiency rate to 50% proficiency rate in algebra. In biology, we've gone from 90 to 65%. In literature, we've gone from 92% to 75%. We are continually to drop. Now here's the most interesting part of all this. Back in 2016, there was a category of students. There was all students and there were historically underperforming kids. And more historically underperforming kids are the kids that which all these programs, SEL, DEI, Equity, were all supposed to help these kids. But let's look at the record, will we? Back in 2016, those same kids were 78% proficient in math and, or excuse me, algebra, were proficient or better. That beats every demographic today, beats all the white kids, all the black kids, all the Hispanic kids, all the IEP kids, economically disadvantaged. The only kids that doesn't beat are the Asian kids. They're beating everybody significantly. But everybody else is down. So the people that are meant to help the most have been the most hurt by your programs, the most hurt. So why do you continue to do it? Who benefits from these programs? That's just in algebra. In biology, same thing. Historically underperforming kids are 96% proficient. That's better than every demographic, again, except for Asian kids today. Everybody is doing worse because of these programs. Why do you continue to do them? And why haven't you made an adjustment to this? This is terrible. And meanwhile, you want to spend all this money on a high school project because somehow, if we have all these fancy new classrooms, it's going to make this go away?
Thank you. Would anyone else like to make public comment this evening?
Hello, Yanni Lambros Lansdale. What Jason said was pretty concerning how it just seems that, you know, over the years, the test scores, overall learning abilities of students seem to be going down. Also, there is a lot of the policies that get pushed on people, you know, I think there's a lack of transparency, a lack of common sense, and just a lack of, you know, putting in the work. It all started with the whole bathroom policy thing we keep discussing, which there's rumors around that it's a conspiracy or it's a lie, not according to current teachers, past teachers, and current students and parents. So there's that. If you want to help a particular type of student, you know, would have been good to put more forethought into the whole process versus just creating a free-for-all situation with no guidelines or boundaries. And again, a lot of people don't know about it, are not aware. Also, one thing I've noticed lately when I've been at the polls or events, a lot of people notice my cross. I personally am on the Christian side of things. I believe in Jesus. Whatever you believe in is your right and I respect it. I'll never go against anybody's wishes to do their thing. But from what I've seen, it seems like you don't really care about how it affects people's faith, not just Christians, but I've talked to a lot of people in the Muslim community, the Hindu community. They also do not agree with this and do not like this, but many, from what I've seen, have been unaware of what's been going down. I just hope that the board can start paying attention to what really matters and being a little more transparent. Also, I heard there was some funny business with the sale of one of the properties that North Penn owns, and you're literally using taxpayer money to fight taxpayers who want to find the truth. So, anybody who is connecting with what I'm saying, watching this at home, here, please reach out to North Penn United. We'd love to help you if you want to help us, but we need to do better for the students. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening would like to make public comment? Okay. Seeing no other folks in the audience, we'll move along in our agenda, and I'm going to ask for a motion to approve two months of meeting minutes, the May 15 action meeting and the June 3 action meeting.
So moved.
Pardon me. I, I'm sorry. You know what? I will do it separately. Thank you, Mr. Summers. So I'm going to revise this. Can we roll back? All right. So I'm going to ask for approval of the minutes from the May 15 action meeting. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so we have Mr. -- I'm sorry, who was it?
Rush.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Rush and Mrs. Ramich. And any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
There are no opposed, motion passes. Thank you. So second up will be approval of the meeting minutes for the June 3 work session. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Mrs. Stoll?
Second.
Mrs. Ramich, second. Any comments or questions? All righty, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Thank you. So we will move now to the committee reports, and we will move directly to the North Mon -- oh, no, I'm sorry, personnel. Correct?
No, you're right.
Am I right? Okay, sorry. We, just for everyone, we are on 4G. North Monaco Tech Technical Career Center, Mr. Rush?
The JOC met on Monday, June 16. In an exec session, we talked about the continued improvement in school discipline and the process the administration is using to compare and choose a software package to achieve better results. In the regular meeting, we discussed updating the communication plan, working with five sending school districts to refine the new seven-year maintenance plan. We didn't have a maintenance plan before at the tech center. Our short-term objectives to expand capacity and our long-term plans to expand capacity. In the past four years, we've added 250 seats to the tech center. This coming year, we'll add another 20 seats, but those seats will be outsourced to Lansdale Hospital, and we're running short on space, so we're trying to figure out how to get more students into the program. And our next meeting will be on Monday, August 18 at 6:00 p.m. for the Capacity Subcommittee and at 7:00 p.m. for the regular JOC meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rush. Now, next up is Mrs. Ramich.
Could we have a comment on the report real quick?
Certainly.
Okay, thank you very much. We just want to make sure that the community understands the piece that Mr. Rush spoke about, the hospital and the students going to the hospital to help learn. We have a number of community partnerships that we are building or rebuilding from previous years in which students are able to go out into the community and learn various tasks in parts of their field, and we're very happy to have Lansdale Hospital continue again to offer to have some students over to get some hands-on experience and see what that professional world is actually like. So, wanted to thank them and thank the other community partners that are working with us.
Thank you for that, Mr. McBain. Any other comments or questions?
Can I just remind people that the reason that we didn't read off reports A through F is because they're all videotaped committee meetings and people.
Thank you. Yes, we usually do say that.
Right. Thank you.
And I was forgetful.
Okay.
And I'll remember. But thank you for clarifying. Again, agenda items 4A through F are video conferenced. Is that correct?
They're available for video.
Thank you.
MP-TV to watch.
All right. Up next is Mrs. Ramich with the North Penn Education Foundation and the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit.
So I'll start with the MCIU. The MCIU board met on May 21st. The start of the meeting started with our celebration of retirees. We will be wishing Dr. Bradley Landis, who is the current Deputy Executive Director, a very happy retirement, and we wish him well. The board agreed to a one-year agreement with the MCIU Educational Association. We approved nine policies for second reading. We had some good news that our Head Start program will be fully funded for the IU for the next, I believe, about five, I think it's a five-year cycle. There were a number of budgets that were approved for the next year, including pre-K counts, services offered within the Office of Technology, summer food service programs, just to name a few. The Office of Early Childhood Services shared report that the most recent policy council kicked off. We're really excited about that. There were three agreements for services with local districts that were reviewed. A contract with the Lancaster Lebanon IU was part of the review as well. The next meeting of the MCIU board will be held on Wednesday, June 25. End of report. And I'll move on now to the North Penn Educational Foundation. The foundation is thrilled to announce its partnership with the North Penn School District in funding the purchase of a scanning electron microscope for the Technology and Engineering Department at the high school. This microscope had previously been on loan to the school for portions of the year and will now reside permanently at the high school. North Penn is the only high school in the country to own its own scanning electron microscope and plans are being worked on to use the equipment in other curricular areas. A few weeks ago, trustees had the opportunity to learn from two students about the microscope, its use, and the extraordinary learning experience it provides. I want to especially thank our EITC donors who made this possible. And on a related EITC note, I would like to thank JL Freed for their recent EITC contribution. Though they have been a longtime supporter of the foundation, this has been their first donation through the tax credit program. The foundation will be busy this summer, preparing for its annual golf outing in October and its Build-A-Bag backpack distribution coming up this summer. More details on that will be forthcoming. To learn more about all things foundation-related, please visit northpennnffoundation.org or contact Christine Lebruski at the ESC. I do want to just say what an incredible experience it was to gather at the high school with fellow Ed Foundation Board members, to hear from students about their use of this scanning electron microscope. They were then preparing for their presentations that they gave at the Nanotech Evening where they presented their work. But to hear about the level of exploration and detail and commitment that these students had was absolutely incredible. And just kind of highlight something, going back to public comment, these are the types of services and engagement that students have and the opportunities that they have within North Penn that will not be represented in a test score. So, thank you. End of report.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Ramich.
Could I say something quick?
Certainly, Mr. Rush.
Mr. Freed has been very active at the tech center and also on his part of our educational foundation. So we do owe the Freed family a big thank you for everything they do for us.
Glad to hear that. Thank you, Mr. Rush.
Thank you, Mr. Rush. Next up is the legislative report. Mr. McBain, please.
Thank you very much. We have no formal report, but we'll have some information during other conversations this evening.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McBain. And next up is our solicitor's report.
Thank you, Madam President. The board, my report this evening is just to announce that the board did meet an executive session immediately prior to tonight's meeting for the purpose of discussing a matter of litigation involving a right-to-know appeal and to consult with the solicitor regarding student residency determination procedures. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Summers. Next up will be Assistant Superintendent Dr. Deanna Waters with the report. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Madam President. Good evening, everyone. Happy to step in for Dr. Bauer tonight, who has a family commitment. All right, I recommend the items listed in the consent agenda, adoption of policies, adoption of policies first reading, contracts, gifts to district, student agreements and hearing waivers, York Avenue Elementary School Plan Con J Audit, business office operational items, Montgomery County Tax Collection Committee, student agreements, alternative placements, and the 2026 board meeting schedule for approval.
Okay, thank you. May I please have a motion for items 6A through 6K?
So moved.
Mrs. Stoll and Mrs. Ramich. Any comments or questions regarding these items?
Just that I think it's absurd that we're being asked for Plan Con J approval 20 years after the renovation is done.
I didn't hear that, Mrs. Stoll. What, I'm sorry.
Plan Con J, for York Avenue. York Avenue was renovated 20 years ago.
I see. I understand your comment now. Any other comments? All right, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the non-consent items, I recommend approval of personnel items as per the attached.
May I please have a motion?
So moved.
Mrs. Rush and Mr. McBain, any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Thank you.
Okay. I recommend approval of Lauren Kane for the position of certified school nurse at $65,000, Step 1, Level 1, effective August 22, 2025. The assignment will be a .6 Walton Farm Elementary School and .2 York Avenue Elementary School and .2 out of district. Ms. Kane has been employed by the North Penn School District Nursing Department since December 2021, so she was a support staff, she's currently a support staff employee, moving to a school nurse position. And as we've done in the past, recently with my own daughter, who helps us out in the summer during the ESY program, when there's a relationship with a board member, myself or Dr. Bauer, we need to call that out per policy.
Okay, thank you.
Right, so I'm going to abstain because Lauren is my daughter-in-law.
Thank you, Mrs. Stoll. All right, may I please have a motion?
So moved.
Mrs. Ramich and Mr. McBain, any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Aye. Me.
All right. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. As we've started doing recently, we have been making the board aware of a situation where we lose an employee, unfortunately, and we did have an employee pass away. So this is an informational item, and I just want to share that James Lakey, who was a van driver, passed away on June 1, 2025, and he had been employed with us since September of 2019. We certainly want to extend our condolences to his family and friends.
Thank you, Dr. [inaudible]. Yes, please.
Yeah, Jim was a football dad and I think North Penn football's biggest fan, and I am very sad to hear about his passing. He was fairly young, so it was a sad situation. And like you said, extend our condolences to Tina Lakey and his sons Jimmy and Nikki.
Thank you, Mrs. Stoll.
Thank you. Okay, we recommend approval of an increase of 4.25% to the salary and hourly rate schedule of non-union and confidential support staff for the 2025-2026 fiscal year, effective July 1, 2025.
Thank you. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Mrs. Ramich, second. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. McBain, any comments or questions?
Just, Madam President, would just like to note that this increase for the non-union and confidential support staff is identical to the increase that is received by North Penn Support Professionals Association. So, as has been the practice in recent years, the increases are the same for both sets of groups.
Thank you, Mr. Summers. And again, this is part of our budget, correct? Okay, thank you. All right, any other comments or questions? Okay, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Thank you.
Okay, recommend approval of the 2025-2026 general insurance package policy and student accident insurance not to exceed 1.2 million as per the attached list of annual premiums and two bonds at a cost of $100 each.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Mrs. Stoll, Mr. Rush, any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, all, motion passes. Thank you.
Okay, I recommend approval of the final budget resolution in the amount of $338,735,000 for the fiscal year beginning in July 1, 2025, per the attached resolution and the PDE 2028 budget document.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Mrs. Stoll?
Second.
Mrs. Ramich, any comments or questions?
I'd like to make a comment regarding this particular item, and my comment is basically a statement. The board is raising taxes to maximize, to the maximum allowed under the Act 1 Index because it's critical to balance our budget responsibly, limit additional borrowing, and protect our Moody's credit rating, which is phenomenal. At the same time, we must address the urgent and growing needs for our aging infrastructure, and we must, most importantly, meet the needs of all of our students going forward. So we support this. Any other comments or questions?
No, I would just comment that we recently had the State Auditor General, Tim DeFor, here with Senator Tracy Penneychuk, and they were teaching our students about the financial responsibility, making sure that you have a good credit rating for when you go out and borrow money, and how important it is to save up for things. And that's what we basically have been doing here, is, you know, protecting our credit rating and making sure that we have money in our general, in our capital fund budget for the major upcoming project that we have going on. And so, I'm glad that the Auditor General was able to come out and speak to our students directly and to see the big project that we're going to be embarking upon and knows now why we've been saving that money up.
Thank you, Mrs. Stoll.
I also want to give a shout-out to our business office through transition and through retirements has done a great job of helping us to keep the process streamlined and really on target and on focus. And to all of our department heads who came and gave budget presentations. This is, I think, one of the most fascinating processes to be part of as a school board director, to be able to hear from department heads about the need, their plan, their vision, and what is needed to help support our students in moving forward each year. So, it is always an enlightening process. I learn something new every year, but also see the pattern and see the need and see how things, the level of integrity and detail that goes into all of this. And Mrs. McMurtry, thank you so much for your comment and really talking about the big projects that we're seeking to endeavor in these, you know, in this effort, and just as a way of reminding the community that budgets are passed each year, decisions about taxes are made each year, but our need to address the facilities is going to be a long-term project. So, we're embarking on a long-term project with the high school, but there are other things that need to be, we need to begin to prepare for, and the work needs to happen. So the biggest, you know, reference is our 10-year capital improvement plan, but even looking beyond that, we need to begin to start to look at those issues. So, this is truly an investment in our students, an investment long-term in our community. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other, Mr. Rush, do you have your mic on? Okay.
President, could you make a quick comment?
Mr. McBain, yes, thank you.
Yeah, just to remind the community, it's important to remember the external factors at play here. Certainly Harrisburg has a lot to do with the guidelines and provisions that we have to function under as a public school district. A great case in point right now is House Bill 1500, which was recently passed by the General Assembly and is now in the hands of the Senate Education Committee. This is a reform to Chiber and Charter, sorry, Cyber and Charter school funding that has been discussed in Pennsylvania for years and years. And it's worth noting that North Penn has had to pay an increasing cost for these types of educational institutions over the past years. This year, we are in need of $236,000 more than last year. In 2024-25, it was $460,000 more. And while we do have a high price tag for those students, we never really get to see what types of success stories are not come out of some of those institutions. So, the bill in question, House Bill 1500, should be looked at soon by the Senate Education Committee. We should have some information from our local senators soon, hoping that when they get back to session in late June, late this month, and then when they finally come back for a longer session in September, we can contact our local officials and hopefully have them do right by us in passing it for the taxpayers of North Penn. Thank you.
Mr. McBain, thank you for that reminder, and we'll circle back closer to the start of the school year when they're back in session again. All right, great. Dr. Waters, please.
Okay. Did you vote?
Yeah, I don't think you voted.
Oh, you have no comments. You're done. I'm sorry.
Me?
Yeah.
I have no comments.
I'm sorry. I saw your mic on and I did not.
Oh, I was just waiting. I'm ready for the next.
Okay, sorry. All right. No other comments then, to be clear. All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. My apologies.
No worries. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to do the next three together. Nice segue from what Mrs. Ramich talked about. We did have detailed presentations for the next three items, and hopefully you were able to hear those because they were great, but they all are under enterprise funds. So the first one, recommending item G, approval of the 2025-2026 Community Education Enterprise Fund Budget in the amount of $259,712 as per the attached. Recommend approval of the 2025-2026 Extended Care Program Enterprise Fund Budget in the amount of $3,394,743 per the attached. And finally, the approval of the 2025-2026 School Nutrition Services Enterprise Fund Budget in the amount of $8,123,319. And here I just want to note that breakfast meals will be free for all students for the year, and lunch meals will be free for all qualifying free and reduced students for the year.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Waters. All right, may I please have a motion for items 7G through 7I?
So moved.
Mrs. Stoll, is there a second?
Second.
Mrs. Rudnick is seconded. Any comments or questions? Oh, I'm sorry, Mrs. Rudnick. I apologize. I'm sorry. I'm really sorry.
I would just like to say that we keep on expanding the extended care program every year and adding more seats so parents can have a place for their children to be while they're working. And I really appreciate the effort that's gone into expanding those seats. Thank you.
All right, just to be clear for the record, Mrs. Ramich made the first motion, and it was seconded by Mrs. Rudnick, and I apologize for that confusion. Anyone else would like to make a comment? All right, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Thank you.
Okay, recommend approval of the 2025 Homestead and Farmstead exclusion as per the attached resolution.
You have a motion, please?
So moved.
Mrs. Stoll, Mr. McBane, any comments or questions? Hearing...
I think it's about another $100 more per homestead, isn't it, Tara, than it was last year? Yeah. So that's pretty good.
I turned my mic off. Yes, you are correct.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All right, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Thank you.
Okay, recommend approval of the filing of district-initiated real estate tax assessment appeals by the August 1, 2025 deadline as per the attached list of parcels and board policy 3631.
Okay, thank you. May I please have a motion?
So moved.
Mrs. Stoll and Mrs. Rudnick, second. Any comments or questions? All right, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Thank you.
Recommend approval of the attached stipulation agreements with Worsco Partners concerning the property located at 2262 North Penn Road within Hatfield Township, tax parcel ID 35-00-07124-221, and that the board president be authorized to execute the attached stipulation agreements. The assessment will increase from $732,260 to $888,300 for the 2025 and subsequent years.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Waters. May I please have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right, Mrs. Stoll and Mr. Rush, any comments or questions? All right, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Thank you.
Recommend approval of the attached stipulation agreements with Silver Fox Management LLC concerning the property located at 220 Commerce Drive within Montgomery Township, tax parcel ID 46-00-00544-01-3, and that the board president be authorized to execute the attached stipulation agreements. The assessment will increase from $1,417,280 to $2,19,600 for 2023, and from $1,417,280 to $1,810,500 for 2024, and from $1,417,280 to $1,677,900 for 2025 and subsequent years.
Thank you, Dr. Waters. That was well done. May I please have a motion?
Thank you. So moved.
Mrs. Stoll, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. McBane, any comments or questions? Any comments or questions?
Nope.
Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Thank you.
Could I ask a question on the previous item?
Yes, Mr. Rush.
Mrs. Hauser?
Yes, sir.
We've had the $600,000 exception for when we go and look at properties. We've had that $600,000 for, ever since I've been on the board. Should we be taking a look at that $600,000, or do you think that's adequate? I mean...
So if you go back up and you look at the items that we are appealing this year, and letter K?
Yes.
We're still managing to pick up around 20, anywhere from 15 to 20 a year in appeals, and most of those are exceeding that amount. So I think we're probably okay. I can absolutely go back through and look at some of the assessments and see where we are as a, if $600,000 as a percentage of property value is appropriate. But I think for the current year, I think we're good.
Okay, yeah, I thought we were good for the current year also. I just wondered, that doesn't, it's not flexible at all, and...
It would require that, I would prefer to, if we're going to change that number, I would bring that for a discussion at a policy committee meeting and have that codified into policy to make sure that we do it equitably across all properties and that we're not trying to single something out. That's why you set a dollar amount like that.
Right. Great. Thank you very much.
Yep, absolutely.
All right, we have a motion on the floor?
No.
No, that was, oh, I'm sorry, that was a comment from the previous one. All right.
Sorry about that.
That's fine.
I think we're on letter N.
We're on N.
All right. All right. Where are we?
N.
That's you.
Okay, I was doing all right for a second. Okay. Recommend ratification of the attached amendment to extend the due diligence period for the sale of the movie lots.
Objection.
Okay, let's have a motion first. Is there a motion in a second?
I'm objecting to the motion.
So moved.
We'll give you an opportunity to object. I just want to, any discussion or addressing the issue typically would be after a motion and a second. So is there a motion?
So moved.
Mrs. Stoll?
Second.
Mr. McBane, any comments or questions?
And there is an objection. Is this a Sunshine Act objection?
Yes, it is.
Okay, go ahead. You can state your objection.
This, the hearing for this sale that got approved on the 27th of January 2025 did not have the requisite advertisement allowing everybody to attend the meeting and hold any question, the validity of the sale. Because there was no advertisement, even though it was passed by the judge, the judge was probably given, or must have been given, a date that said it was advertised. So passing a resolution or a motion based upon a false decree is a violation of the law.
Do you have anything further beyond that?
Yeah, I do, but I want you to address that, because if I'm wrong about it, then the rest goes away.
Okay, well, your objection is, it is not, in fact, a Sunshine Act objection. Your objection is to a process that has occurred involving the sale or the proposed sale of this property under the law, under the school code relative to the sale of school property.
Section 7-707, which is part of Sunshine Law.
It is not. That is, you're referencing the public school code. The Sunshine Act deals with public meetings of the board and notice of public meetings of the board, agendas of the board, you know, things that occur at a board meeting. Your concern, it sounds like, is regarding the hearing process that occurred relative to the sale of the property. You know, I certainly can't speak to the specific issue that you're mentioning. It's something that the district could certainly look into. But as far as the ability to raise a Sunshine Act objection during this meeting, your objection is not under the Sunshine Act, it's under the school code.
So you're allowed to pass... So you're passing, or agreeing to a policy or an item that was not legally sound?
I'm certainly not suggesting that this item is not legally sound or that there's anything improper. Your ability to speak at this moment is limited to any objection under the Sunshine Act, and you're not raising any concerns under the Sunshine Act. So my recommendation to the board is that they have no Sunshine Act concern. You've made your objection, and there is no basis under the Sunshine Act to not move forward with this.
Second part is...
Thank you.
Is it a Sunshine Act concern?
You tell me, because clearly I'm off.
Your right is to raise an issue under the Sunshine Act.
Right, so the part about being able to actually see the contract that is being voted upon, which is part of all of these, you know, you guys generally say all of this is available in board docs. And yet we can't see this contract in board docs. In fact, it was decreed by a judge that you need to make it available, and yet you haven't done that.
Yeah, so respectfully, I would completely disagree in that the approval of what is on the agenda at this moment is the amendment to extend the due diligence period. That amendment is, in fact, attached to the board docs. And to the extent it references another contract, it would be referencing the agreement of sale, which was also publicly shared at a prior board meeting.
The entire contract was never entirely shared.
The agreement of sale, yeah, I think...
We need to stop this. This is not part of the Sunshine Law, as Mr. Summers, our solicitor, stated. So Mr. Liner, please sit down. Let's continue the meeting. We have a motion on the floor. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Okay, recommend the approval of the Class 7 request from Buxmont Men's Baseball League for the field use at Penfield Middle School.
May I please have a motion?
So moved.
Mrs. Stoll?
Second.
Mrs. Ramich, second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Thank you.
Okay, recommend approval for change order MC0... I'm sorry, Mr. Rush, I apologize.
Sorry to interrupt. As always, I know that Mr. Summers will make himself available to you after the meeting to discuss these items with you. And if any information is needed that you don't have, I'm sure that the administration will make it available to you if it's within the law. Thank you.
We're going to move on. We do have, which item? P? P. I think I'm on P.
You're on P.
I think, yes, okay. Recommend approval for change order MC01 to Gem Mechanical Incorporated in the amount of $15,385.70 for additional services outside of the original scope of work.
Okay, may I please have a motion?
So moved.
Mrs. Stoll, second. Mr. McBane, any comments or questions? Mr. Slaughter, I do have a question specifically, sorry.
And it's specific to, just, I would like for the public to, or the community, pardon me, to understand, when you speak to pollutants in this particular component, what does that mean? It has nothing, no, it's not a safety issue or concern for students in the building, correct?
No, it's in the refrigerant, it's in a controlled closed-loop system. What happens is sometimes oil from the compressors contaminates the refrigerant loop, and therefore it becomes unusable. So we had to get additional refrigerant because the refrigerant we were going to recover and reinstall was contaminated.
Okay, thanks very much for that clarification. Any other comments or questions? All right, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Thank you.
Okay, recommend approval to advertise a request for proposal, RFP, for an environmental monitoring and testing consultant for the high school project Phases 2 and Phase 3. Or Phase 2 and 3.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
So it's Mr. McBane first and Mrs. Ramich second? All right, so another just clarif, not clarification, but just a little bit of an explanation about why we are doing this in advance of even the bids being opened and what this affords or provides to our community.
So while you're removing ACM materials required to have a monitoring service...
Can you define ACM, please?
I'm sorry, asbestos-containing material. So while we're removing hazardous material, it is required to have a third-party independent testing agency there overseeing the removal of this, these items. So these people will be in the containment area with the removal contractor while they're removing the material and also doing air monitoring inside and outside the area while that's going on.
So if the community surrounding wanted to see the testing results, that's available, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, all right, thank you so much. All right, any other comments or questions? All right, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ms. Hauser? No, you're good. Okay. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Thank you.
Okay, the current contract for the copiers and copier services is coming to an end in December of 2025, so we are seeking permission to move forward with an RFP for copiers and copier services.
Thank you. May I please have a motion?
So moved.
Mrs. Ramich and Mrs. Rudnick, any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Thank you.
Recommend approval to award the RFP contract for the data analytics to Hanover Research for the total amount of $119,455 for a term of five years at $22,500 in year 1, $23,175 in year 2, $23,870 year 3, $24,585 in year 4, and $25,325 in year 5. And again, we have been using Hanover for the past several years, and after going through a thorough process, have made the decision to stay with them.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Waters. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Rush, Mrs. Ramich, second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes.
Okay, recommend approval to award the curriculum RFP contract for the elementary library digital research and literacy resource tool for curriculum grades K through 5 to Capstone for the Pebble Go product in the amount of $105,225,000... I'm sorry. $105,225.90 for a term of three years at $35,075.30 per year and an option to renew for two individual years thereafter, with pricing to be determined at such time as those renewal years. And again, this is a company or vendor we've been using for a long time and just continuing on with their online nonfiction items product for little IMCs.
May I please have a motion?
So moved.
Mrs. Stoll, second. Mrs. Rudnick, second. Any comments or questions?
I have a question. Is any of this going to introduce elementary students to AI at all?
I don't believe so. I'm Dr. Hart, shaking your head no as well. It is, it's more like nonfiction articles that students can access when they're in the library.
Okay.
Just reading materials. It's another resource that we use while they're spending time at that special.
All right, thank you so much. Any other comments or questions? All right, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Thank you.
Okay, recommend approval to award the curriculum RFP contract for the K-12 Universal Screening Assessment Tool, RFP, to Renaissance for the STAR program at the amount of $290,741 for a term of one year and an option for the board to renew a contract for three years thereafter, with pricing at $280,194.50 per year for the additional three years and for the district to engage in a pilot program with curriculum associates, the IREDDI program, for a year, with the option to engage in a board-approved three-year contract at the end of the trial period in April of 2026.
Okay, may I please have a motion?
So moved.
Mrs. Stoll, there a second? Mr. McBane? I, do you have a question? I do have a question. So for some of these contracts that we're approving, so they're for a year with the... they're for a year with the, with the option to extend it. Are there, I assume there are certain metrics that admin and staff review in order to determine if you want to extend it, and then you bring it back to the board for us to, again, if you recommend extending it, would you also bring us the key metrics, measurements to validate why we should extend this two or three years?
Did I turn it off? I think we could have the curriculum team come back to you, maybe perhaps through ECI to kind of share the data that they're using. They currently, we have been using STAR, and we have iReady, you know, with math, but I would think they want to get a better sense of the alignment with the standards and such, and see, you know, which makes sense to continue moving forward. But we've had success with both, and I think they try to determine, you know, is one better than the other, and I think both work well for us. And so this will give us a year to pilot one, continue with the other one, and then at the end of next year, decide if we want to hold on to both or move in a different direction.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Hart, did you want to add anything?
Can you please go to the-
You did a great job providing an overview. Part of the area focus is really around the needs in our primary grades versus our upper elementary and middle school, and sometimes one resource isn't perfect for all of the grades, and so that's really what the deep dive is at this moment. So that's our reason for kind of holding on, but then also kind of taking a little bit of a dive. And I think as Dr. Waters shared, we've been using iReady in math, and it's been going very well. And so because there is an ELA version of that, we want to just be able to kind of take a little bit of a dive and see if having two resources within the same vendor would be beneficial or not.
Thank you, Dr. Hart.
Sorry, Dr. Hart, to make sure, just to make sure I'm following to Ms. Miss Mick, Ms. Kathy's question. So what you're saying is that we're going to pilot with two programs?
So actually, we've been using Red STAR for a number of years.
Yeah, right.
We went through the RFP process, large committee. The finding was that it worked really well in our upper elementary, middle school, but not as well in our primary.
Okay.
And because we're currently using iReady in math, and that the process and the structure has been pretty beneficial for our primary teachers, we want to take a little bit of a dive in to see if it would be beneficial.
Okay.
So we want to hold on, and then we've got a few, a number of teachers who are piloting as well.
Okay. I'm asking, I'm trying to follow, because we always get feedback about the changes in curriculum, so I just want to make sure I'm following. So the iReady in math, we're using right now.
Yeah.
Yes. And then we're using STAR-
As a universal screener.
As a universal screener.
And so our goal, iReady is our, the main resource that we're using for math.
Yeah.
We are looking, the RFP process was for a universal screener, and so we've been using STAR. It's been working pretty well for many, but not all.
Okay.
We are looking at using iReady for our universal screening and reading as a screener as well.
Okay.
So that's, is that helpful?
Yes, I understand. So I think back to Ms. Kathy's point, my mouth can't do it, I'm sorry. Back to Ms. Kathy's point, we should have, therefore have what our metrics are for, to then enable us to make that final decision of this is the one we're going with because of X, Y, Z.
Absolutely. And so we had some criteria that we used as part of the RFP process that kind of prompted this, and our expectation is, as we're kind of moving through the process, we would come back to ECI, share what the results have been as a foundation for our recommendations for next year.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. All right. Any other comments or questions regarding this item? All right, hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we recommend approval to award the RFP contract for the medical director to Liberty Urgent Care for the amount of $28,500 for a term of three years at $9,500 per year, with an option to renew for two individual years thereafter, as well as the individual services of school student physicals as needed at $25 per physical for a term of three years, with an option to renew for two years, individual years thereafter. There's a lot of this, you know, after this year, but it's good because then we can determine if we like what we're doing and keep the service or not.
Okay, great. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Mrs. Stoll, is there a second?
Second.
Mrs. Rudnick, second. Any comments or questions?
I make one quick comment.
Yes, please.
I just want to note that the medical director that's being recommended tonight does service some neighboring school districts, and their experience has been positive, so I just wanted to point that out.
Okay, thank you so much. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The motion passes. Thank you.
Okay. Recommend approval to award the curriculum RFP for the plagiarism detection tool, TturnItIn, at the amount of $100,913.34 for a term of three years at $33,325 year one, $33,294.75 year two, and $34,293.59 year three. Virtual training as needed at $500 per virtual training session, and an option for board approval to renew for two individual years thereafter. And TturnItIn is a detection tool that we have already been using, again, after going through a process. The team decided that they wanted to stay with TturnItIn. It's, it's an opportunity for teachers to really get a sense of whether students are doing their own work. You know, with AI, this is a big topic right now, and so we're working hard to make sure our students can use AI as a tool, but still making sure that they are actually writing their own papers and things of that nature. So that's what this does.
All right, thank you. May I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
I didn't, was it Mr. McBane?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And then Mrs. Stoll, second. Any comments or questions?
I have one question regarding the virtual training session.
Mm-hmm.
So the training is $500 per session, and how many people, is it staff, teachers that are doing?
Usually when we have that in the contract, it's staff. It could be, it could be the English department, it could be, you know, the secondary English teachers. It's just usually as needed. I'm not sure if they have an exact amount, but typically we can use it. Do you know, Dr. Hart, it's, yeah, it's typically, it's typically however we want to do it.
So is your question, Ms. Kathy, basically approximately how much do we expect to be spending on-
500.
-virtual training?
Yeah, I would say that it's not, it's not a lot of money, but if it's, if it's done randomly and it's not done in a more organized fashion, if somebody decided they wanted to have training, and then we had to pay 500, times that by, you know, 800 people, you know, I just want to understand how you orchestrate and manage that, please.
So Mrs. Rachel Early, our supervisor for humanities, would really be one of the people that that, she would kind of facilitate that. And oftentimes, it's, you know, maybe the department chair is having a meeting, or maybe there's a professional development session, but it's not something where teachers can just randomly call the vendor and schedule their own one-on-one without going through the proper channels.
Thanks. Okay, thank you. Dr. Hart?
Please, Dr. Hart.
I would just add to that, as we think about goals for each of our departments as we move through, this can be an area of focus, and so we would probably have, we would have designated time which we would allocate for that opportunity. Particularly, sometimes the virtual piece will allow us to have maybe teachers at the middle school and high school kind of participate in a, in a training together. And sometimes we might have a fabulous presenter who just kind of can't get to our area, but we have great skills that we want to be able to leverage their expertise, and that's part of the reason for that as well. In most of our contracts, there's a professional development component, because we know that people need support and be able to use the tools as effectively and efficiently as possible.
Okay, that helps me understand scope and managing it.
Thank you.
I mean, it's not a lot, but it was a slight flag in my head.
That's a good question.
All right, thanks. All right, any other comments or questions? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes. Thank you.
All right, recommend approval of the 2025-2026 athletic medical supplies bid to each vendor for the amount awarded as per the bid tabulation summary totaling $8,661.41.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Rush and Mrs. Stoll, may I, any other comments or, any comments or questions? All right, hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes. Thank you.
Oh, and my last item. Recommend approval of the 2025-2026 fall athletic supplies bid to each vendor for the amount awarded as per the bid tabulation summary totaling
Thank you. Mr. Rush made the first motion. May I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Stoll, any comments or questions? All right, hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes. Thank you. Dr. Waters, and now we'll turn it over to Ms. Howser. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And just remind me, do we normally do these as consent because they've already been on committee?
Each one, each A, B, and C separately.
Okay. Administration is seeking approval for item 8A, recommends approval for the treasurer's report for the month of May.
All righty, thank you. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Stoll and Mrs. Romic, is there, are there any other, are there comments or questions? All righty, hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes. Thank you.
Seeking approval for item 8B, ratification of disbursements for the month of May in the amount of $29,131,601.71.
All right, thank you. May I please have a motion? Mr. McBane?
Second.
Mrs. Stoll, second. Any comments or questions? All righty, hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes. Thank you.
Item 8C, recommend approval of the attached budget transfers for the month of May 2025 in the amount of $250,493.33.
May I please have a motion?
So moved.
Mrs. Stoll and Mr. Rush, first and second. Any comments or questions? All right, hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none. The motion passes. Okay.
And 8D is available for your review.
Thank you, Ms. Howser. All righty, any other business? A big thank you?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you for graduation last night.
Yeah.
I just want to thank the security staff for all they did to make sure that our ceremony was safe, and I want to thank the grounds crew and the custodial staff for setting up the stadium. The stadium looked fabulous. It was really nice. And I know it's a lot of cleanup, a lot of work setting it up to begin with, and then a lot of cleanup afterwards. So I just want to, you know, say thank you to them for getting all of that work done. And also, obviously, to the staff that coordinated the ceremony in the first place. Everybody always comments every year about how quickly we get through giving diplomas out to over 1,000 kids, and it really is a, like a well-oiled machine. Every year, it's very impressive. And that's because a lot of people just put their heart and soul into making it a nice evening for our kids, and I just want to thank everybody involved in doing that. It was a really nice night, and thankfully, the weather held off. It didn't rain, so.
It was an incredible evening celebrating our 1,064 graduates. And yes, just the amount of teamwork and effort that goes into that is just amazing. And, and it's so wonderful to see the families and the communities come together to celebrate these students and their achievements, and the pride that the students have as they approach, grab, you know, taking their diploma, walking across the stage. It's really amazing. But also, we had another big day yesterday, too. It was also the last day of school for our students, all of our students. And so do want to thank all school personnel for an incredible school year and for all of the work that went into supporting our students and our community. So we wish everyone a wonderful summer and wish our students a great summer filled with lots of opportunities to explore and engage, and just to be ready to start school the next, in the, in the fall. So do all the things that they need to do and explore our community to then be able to, to start fresh the next year. And thank you for everything that everyone did to put into this year. Thanks.
Thank you. So I'm going to thank Mr. Slaughter for being here, because he has a full summer ahead with building preparation. There are almost 13,000 children in our schools for almost 10 months for about eight to 10 hours a day, so this is the time where the work gets done in order to prepare. So this is not stand-down for your organization, but thank you for the upcoming summer work, and thanks for yesterday. It was epic. It was a great time. All righty, any, oh, please.
Yeah, I just want to say, too, just on behalf of all of us at North Penn, I also just want to wish everyone a wonderful summer. I know sometimes during the school year, you don't feel like you're going to see the end, but it comes really quickly, and these years go faster and faster the older I get. But I just want to thank our amazing staff here at North Penn for all of the work that you do to, you know, help our students be as successful as they possibly can be, and also want to wish our students a wonderful summer. And we'll all be here. Some of us will be here all summer, but, but we like this time.
Okay, awesome. All right, with that, I'll adjourn the meeting, and our next meeting is in July? No, I- July 17? Yes. It's not on here. All right. I have it, July 17. All right, so our next action meeting will be July 17 at 7:00 PM, correct? Yes. All right, thank you all. Have a good evening.
Thank you.